Good morning. I hope everyone can hear me, okay? I would like to call the meeting to order for the Alabama Community College Board of Trustees. Dr. Sims, thank you so much for your hospitality. Everything has been wonderful. And thank you to your staff.[928.42][928.42](APPLAUSE). I welcome all of you here today and thank you for your interest in the Alabama Community College System. A great deal of preparation has gone into the development of the documentation of this meeting. Chancellor, I want to thank you and your staff and all of the college presidents and their staffs for their work in preparing for this meeting today. As always, we remain laser focused on student success and remain true to our core mission of adult education, workforce development, and academic excellence. Today, we have giving our invocation. We had the Reverend Dr. Mario Ford. Mario Dwayne Ford was born in Madison County, Alabama. He accepted his call into the gospel ministry in November of 1992 under the Pastorate of the Elder James Lane at Taylor's Chapel Primitive Baptist Church. Pastor Ford received his pre-collegiate education in Huntsville School System. He furthered his education and studies at Andersonville Baptist Seminary, Calhoun Community College, and Huntsville Bible College. He has received four earned degrees, a Bachelor of Theology, a Master of Theology, Doctorate of Ministry, and Master of Ministry. He was ordained in October 1996 as an elder in the St. Bartley Primitive Baptist Church, where he served as an associate minister. He also became active in the Indian Creek Primitive Baptist Association Youth Congress, where he served as chaplain, parliamentarian, and president. In June of 2001, he was elected to the Pastorate of the St. Manor Primitive Baptist Church in Gunnersville, where the church membership continued to grow. Pastor Ford is a man of social consciousness, which is evidenced in his contributions to civic and religious causes. In 2012, he was awarded a key to the city of Gunnersville, Alabama, for his efforts there. In 2019, Pastor Ford was elected the fourth pastor of the Douglas Tabernacle Primitive Baptist Church in Huntsville. In addition to his duties at Douglas Tabernacle, Dr. Ford serves as an adjunct professor at the Huntsville Bible College. Vice President of the Greater Huntsville Interdenominational Fellowship, Bible expositor of the Indian Creek Primitive Baptist Association, General Secretary of the Tri-State Primitive Baptist Convention, and a member of the National Primitive Baptist Convention. Pastor Ford's aim is neither fortune nor fame, but rather to serve this present age, his calling is to fulfill. He is married to the former Aranika Natasha Ray. They are the proud parents of Sidney (I have a Sidney) and Orlando. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Mario Ford.[1106.08][1106.08](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, and to the Chair, and to President Sims, and each of you. Permit me to breathe a word of welcome on behalf of the Ministers of the City of Huntsville. And thank you for all you do for our parishioners and for the people of our community at large. We are blessed by this great work here at Drake and the other 23 member colleges as you perform and do what you do in advancing. I'm so blessed to be here and to see the technological advances taking place and keeping us relevant in meeting the needs of our community. If you would, every head bound, every eye closed. Eternal God, we thank you for being God. We thank you for being in charge and for allowing this gathering to come across the state of Alabama. We ask that you would bless each member college, God. Bless the work that they do, the teachers, the administrators, the janitors, the students. I ask that you would bless this board meeting, that it might be fruitful, God, and that the heavenly Father, this system might be strengthened by its being. It's right now in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
(APPLAUSE). The Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we call roll, I'd like to call on Trustee Rogers to welcome a special guest.
Yes, I'd like to welcome Dr. Katherine Welber, who is President of Athens State University.
Katherine, would you raise your hand, please? Stand up, please. Thank you.[1234.33][1234.33](APPLAUSE). At Athens State University, there, we are a senior level college, junior and senior level, and the largest number of students that we get come from our community college system. So thank you for our community colleges.
Thank you for being here. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Jeff Schell?
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Present.
Ms. Valerie Gray?
Present.
Mr. Goodrich Rogers?
Present.
Mr. Ron Houston?
Present.
Mr. Leland Ron?
Present.
Mr. Tim Martin?
Present.
Mr. Bryn Lycett?
Present.
Dr. Edith Edwards?
Present.
Governor Kay Ody?
Great, we have a quorum. Board members, you were given an agenda in preparation for this meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Just a moment, a second.
I have a motion from Mr. Rogers, a second from Mr. Schell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or voice vote. The agenda has been approved. Also, in preparation for this meeting, board members, you received a copy of the minutes from the September the 10th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Go ahead, Madam Chair.
I have a motion from Mr. Houston. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Schell. Do we have any discussion? Any changes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or voice vote. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Okay, thank you. All right, now, I will turn it over to Dr. Patricia Sims for our college spotlight for Drake State Community and Technical College. And again, thank you for your hospitality and for hosting us in this wonderful building.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Chancellor Baker, board members, and our guests, welcome to the Leidos Advanced Training Complex. We are so excited to have you here. We are really thrilled to have had the honor to host the October board meeting. So I hope everyone had breakfast and a chance to tour the facility, and we are so proud again to have this addition to our campus. And while we are extremely proud of this facility, I think we were all reminded last week during our regional meetings that the people in our system are our most valuable resource, and that's true all over our system, especially here at Drake State. So I am so proud and so blessed to work alongside the best students, faculty, and staff. And I tell them how I'm mostly in the way, I think, most of the time, but I'm so grateful to be a part of this journey with my team. And so I want to thank them publicly for all the hard work that they've done in preparation for this meeting, but more importantly, the work that they do every day to take care of our students. So, my team, thank you, thank, thank you.[1429.14][1429.14](APPLAUSE). So this beautiful facility, it wouldn't be possible without the unwavering support and leadership of few Chancellor Baker. So again, in this board, we thank you for believing in our vision and for helping us prepare ourselves to meet the workforce demands of our region. And Chancellor, you may not remember this, but about a year, maybe a couple of years ago, you were coming up to speak to Rotary, and we were riding around the campus, and you were talking about the things, and they started on the building, it was coming along. And your words, what you said to me was, "This is going to be a game changer for you." And I want you to know that your words are still are ringing true. This is, it is changing the game for us, and so really excited about the things, all the more that's to come because of this facility. And I also, again, want to thank our sponsors for this event. Dr. Ford, thank you for being here. Katherine, always good to see you, my dear friend. And all of our sponsors, again, they always around, hand, Aaron, or Roger, I see some of them in the room. Thank you all, because you're always here, and thank you for your continuous support. So our college spotlight, so as many of you know, Huntsville is home to Redstone Arsenal, and our nickname, we're often called the Pentagon of the South because of the strategic presence of several three-star generals here in our, and major, all of the major commands here in our area. And of course, with the relocation of Space Command to Redstone, that further solidifies our national security and the presence and importance of this area. But this also opens new doors.
And I'm the one really with the teacher voice.[1569.91][1569.91](LAUGHTER). Thank you for being here, and I do want to extend a warm welcome to Chancellor Baker We appreciate you being here, and we look forward to you getting to see what we see every day, the growth of Drake State. My name again is Nioka Hambrick, and I serve as the Veterans and Military Affairs Coordinator at Drake State and also a financial aid administrator. I've been privileged to serve in this role for 15 years. I am a graduate of Drake State, but I'm also a graduate of Athens State University. So during my time here, I have witnessed firsthand the incredible impact of education to our veterans, their spouses, and their dependents. Normally, I'm very ready and on task to share statistics, growth, the economic impact of the North Alabama area of our veterans and those dependents. But today, instead of numbers, I'm going to talk to you about people. I'm going to talk to you about the families who represent the very fabric of Drake State. A unique fact about Veteran and Military Affairs in our office specifically is that we don't just serve individuals, we serve entire families. I love to highlight my people. I always call them to task, right? But I always bring them to the forefront. During my tenure, we have had 17 families that's made up of husbands, wives, children, grandchildren, brothers, sisters. And today, I'm going to get to have the opportunity for you to hear their story. I've watched them pursue their education in their, together or in their own season of life. This truly reflects the generational impact of education and the way it can reshape legacies. Drake State is proud to provide a student-focused, one-on-one experience that builds trust, camaraderie, and opportunity. For our military-connected students, this isn't just education, it's a transformation. It is the pathway to a stronger future for themselves, their families, and ultimately the communities. Today, I'm honored to introduce to you- it's a transformation. It is the pathway to a stronger future for themselves, their families, and ultimately, the communities. Today, I'm honored to introduce to you one such family, Mr. Gabriel Soto, United States Veteran of the Army, Ms. Priscilla Soto, and their sons, Damian and Dante. This family represents the generational impact that one soldier's commitment to education can have. What begins with a single step into higher education extends into a legacy that changes not only one life, but entire generations to come. And so, rather than me tell their story, I'm proud to invite the backbone of this family, Ms. Priscilla Soto, to share their journey with you, a journey of commitment, resilience, and generational change at Drake State. Priscilla?
Good morning. It is a privilege to speak to you today and an honor to represent Drake State. Dr. Sims, thank you for giving me this opportunity to share my family's story and the impact that Drake State has had on our lives. In the summer of 2019, our family relocated to Madison, Alabama, after my husband Gabriel had transitioned out of the Army with nine and a half years of active-duty service. He had gone from being a Black Hawk mechanic to earning the title of Crew Chief of the Year. And that experience brought us to North Alabama to continue his career working with Blackhawks and aircraft engines. When we moved here, I had a plan. I was going to start the fall semester at Drake State, but due to complications with my transcripts and honestly, some discouragement when things didn't go smoothly, I put that dream aside and shifted to homeschooling my son Dante, who was in the fourth grade at the time. Our older son Damian was a sophomore at Sparkman High School when the world shut down in 2020. Like so many other students, he had to adjust to online learning while dealing with all of the challenges of that moment. But Damian didn't give up. By his junior year, he made the bold decision to combine his junior and senior years into one. He graduated from Madison County Virtual Academy in May 2022 at just 16 years old. That summer, I brought Damian to Drake to register for fall semester, and that's when we met Ms. Nioka Hambrick. She welcomed us and explained all the benefits our family was eligible for as a military-connected family. During our conversation, I mentioned how proud I was of Damian and also shared that Dante was going back to public school. Then she asked me something that stuck. Well, what are you going to do now? I explained that I had tried to start back in 2019, but that had been blocked from getting my transcripts because my former school had been closed and sold. And her response was, "Oh, no. We're going to do something about this. If you want to come to Drake, we're going to get you in Drake." That conversation sparked something in me. It was the beginning of hope. Five years later, I finally received my full transcripts, and I'm now in my third semester of the Business Accounting Program here at Drake State. But my journey isn't the only one. During this time, my husband Gabriel's employment contract ended, and we were faced with uncertainty. Knowing the benefits available to him, his dedication to our family, and his tenacity to sharpen his skills, he enrolled at Drake State during the spring of 2023 to take classes that would bridge the gap. Financially, the benefits he had earned while serving his country carried us through that season. Gabriel not only completed the term strengthening his skills, he received a new contract working on aircraft. But he also wanted to take his skill set even further, and with that, he gained employment with an industry partner at Blue Origin, working on rocket engines. Our son Damian is now an alumni of Drake State as he graduated the Automotive Program in May of 2025. He was awarded a paid internship at Blue Origin and is awaiting a full-time job offer. Dante, our youngest, has been along for the ride and is eager to claim his spot at Drake State as well. As a freshman at Sparkman 9, he's already looking forward to starting dual enrollment here at Drake in his sophomore year. His interest is in the welding program. So, today, as I stand here, I can say that Drake State has become so much more than a college for us. It has become part of our family's story. This institution has given us hope, opportunity, and a vision for the future. From the faculty to the staff, every person has played a role in helping us grow into endless possibilities. In our home and in our hearts, Drake State holds a special place, and I truly believe, because of this college, our family's future will be brighter for generations to come. Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, Board, Chancellor, yes, that is a shining example of what we, the Alabama Community College System, Drake State, and all of our institutions, of how we make life better. So, thank you again. It was an honor to host you, and thank you for the opportunity.
I think after every college spotlight every month, it rewrites our mission statement. So, thank you for sharing your story. Okay, let's see. Now, we're going to move to, on our agenda, items eight, Executive Legal and Public Information. Eight A91 is the Alabama Community College System Recommendation Regarding Adoption of the Revised Policy 204.01. It's the appointment of local administrative staff as shown. The rationale is the purpose of the proposed revision is to add requirements for the employment of Vice President's Dean's Assistant or Associate Dean's Executive Directors, Directors, Deputies, or Chiefs by a contract basis effective July 1, 2024, which was passed by the Alabama Legislature and signed into law by Governor Kay Ivey of May 15. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
I have a motion from Mr. Schell. I have a second from Mr. Houston. Do we have any discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Item 8A2. Southern Union, we're moving over to Southern Union State, the renewal of the Bookstore Operations Agreement with Barnes &amp; Noble College Booksellers. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees ratify Southern Union's entering into the renewal of its Bookstore Operation and Services Agreement with Barnes &amp; Noble College Booksellers for the period beginning August 1, 2025 and ending July the 31st, 2030. The college shall receive a commission of 14.1% on all gross sales up to $2 million and a commission of 15.1% on gross sales above $2 million and a commission of 7% on gross sales of digital course materials. Do I have a motion to ratify?
So move.
I have a motion from Mr. Lightsey. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Rome. Do we have any matters of discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move to item 9A1, which is... We're going to move down south to Bishop State Community College. This is the addition of an instructional site. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board approve an additional instructional site for Bishop State Community College. This site is, the demand for, the demand for the LPM program has exceeded the current capacity available on the college's downtown campus. Additionally, there's growing population of rural students located at Alma Bryant High School and Theodore High School who have expressed interest in taking part in college activities. There's also a long-term care facility located in the Grand Bay area that will serve as a clinical site for nursing 112. The Rural Healthcare Initiative funding will be used to support the expansion of the LPM program. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
I have a motion from Mr. Schell. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Houston. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
We are going to move over to item A2 for Coastal Alabama, the Atmore Campus Building E renovation for Rural Healthcare Centralized Training. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System authorize Coastal Alabama to proceed with the project name Atmore Campus Building E renovation for Rural Healthcare Centralized Training Center. This is a change order number two. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than January the 1st, 2026, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
I have a motion from Mr. Schell. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Lightsey. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Now, we are going to move over to the western part of the state, to Shelton State Community College, to the Martin Campus. This is a softball field, natural grass replacement with artificial grass. It is recommended that the ACS authorize Shelton State to proceed with the project name Martin Campus Softball Field Natural Grass Replacement with Artificial Grass. Construction contracts for the project shall be executed no later than January the 1st of '26, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion from Mr. Rome. Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. McCartney. Do we have any items of discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
We are going to move to Calhoun Community College, to the Huntsville Campus, and this is item 9A4. It is recommended that the ACS Board of Trustees authorize Calhoun Community College to proceed with the construction of the project named Huntsville Campus Sparkman Building Restrooms and Corridor Renovations. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than January the 1st of '26, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
I've got a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Houston. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
We're going to stay at Calhoun Community College, but we're going to move over to the Decatur Campus. This is for the Student Union Center. It is recommended that the ACS authorize Calhoun Community College to proceed with construction of the project named Decatur Campus Student Union Center. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than January the 1st of '26, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Schell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Excuse me. We are going to stay at the Decatur Campus for item 9A6, Calhoun Community College, Decatur Campus Purchase of 219 Second Avenue Southeast Property. It is recommended that the ACS Board authorize Calhoun Community College to proceed with the project name Decatur Campus Purchase of 219 Second Avenue Southeast Property. The closing process was completed in September of 2025, and this action replaces the Board of Trustees' authorization dated August the 13th, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
I have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Lightsey. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Now, we are going to move over to Bevill State Community College, to the Jasper Campus. This is the HVAC Training Center Edition for Energy Services Infrastructure Training Center. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Bevill State Community College to proceed with the project name Jasper Campus HVAC Training Center Edition for Energy Services Infrastructure Training Center. It's a funding increase in FFNE for training equipment, new trucks, setup, and pre-purchase of MEP. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than January the 1st of 2026, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion from Mr. Lightsey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Houston. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Okay, item 9A8, Lawson State Birmingham Campus Tennis Courts Renovations. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Lawson State Community College to proceed with the project name Birmingham Campus Tennis Courts Renovation. This is phase two construction of the new tennis courts. The construction contract shall be executed no later than January the 1st, 2026, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion from Mr. Houston. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Rome. Excuse me. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Okay. We are going to move over to item 9A9, Lurleen B. Wallace Community College. This is at the Andalucia Campus, the Seth Hammett Gymnasium Renovation and Addition. It is recommended that the ACS authorize Lurleen B. Wallace Community College to proceed with the project name Andalucia Campus Seth Hammett Gymnasium Renovation and Addition. Construction contracts for the project shall be executed no later than January the 1st, 2026, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
I have a motion from Mr. Mitchell. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Lightsey. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
We are going to move to Southern Union, to the Opelika Campus. This is the Opelika Campus Higginbotham Academic Center Roofing and Building Exterior Waterproofing. It is recommended that the ACS Board of Trustees authorize Southern Union State Community College to proceed with the project named Opelika Campus Higginbotham Academic Center Roofing and Building Exterior Waterproofing. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than January the 1st of 2026, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. McCartney. Do we have any items of discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Item 9A11, we are going to stay at Southern Union for the Opelika Campus. This is the Health Sciences Re-roofing and Building Exterior Waterproofing. It is recommended that the ACS Board of Trustees authorize Southern Union State Community College to proceed with the project name Opelika Campus Health Services Roofing and Building Exterior Waterproofing. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than January the 1st of '26, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Mr. McCartney. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Rome. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
The motion passes. Again, I want to say I breeze through these very quickly, but there's a lot of work that goes into this, and I try to look at each president when we approve something to let you know that we, we take it very seriously. So, again, thank you all for your hard work in getting this information to us. Next on our agenda is personnel. We have no Personnel Committee reports. Next on our agenda is the Chancellor's report.
Let's ask Neil come up. And give a report on enrollment.
Trustees for your support, your unwavering support for our system and our colleges and these students and families who are impacted, the work that goes on here. President Sims, thank you for your hospitality and for this absolutely beautiful college spotlight and family spotlight and the work that's happening here in North Alabama is wonderful to see. And I know it's extremely rewarding for you to be a part of. I want to give a very quick, one-slide enrollment update. We have, we have finally exceeded the 98,000 mark for students this fall. So, as of yesterday, we have 98,012 students who are registered for four credit courses this fall. That is a 9.6% increase over the final Fall '24 number. That is, that equates to over 8,500 additional students, and 23 of our 24 colleges are ahead of their final Fall '24 number. So, how that translates into credit hour production, we have, we have our colleges, right now, they've posted over 823,000 credit hours that these students are producing. That also is a 9% increase over the final Fall '24 number. An almost, an increase of almost 68,000 more credit hours. more credit hours, and again, 23 of our 24 colleges are showing an increase in credit hour production. This is incredible. A lot of credit needs to go to our colleges, our presidents, their faculty and staff, because the work that is happening to make, for me to be able to report this every month is coming directly from these colleges, and as Ms. Gray speaks about all the work that goes into these agenda items, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into these enrollment increases. So kudos to our college. Thank you for what you're doing in your communities and on your campuses. Are there any questions about enrollment? All right. Thank you so much. Yes.
That's it? Moving on to committee reports. Board members, do we have any committee reports? Wow, this may go down as my shortest board meeting ever.
The date and location of our next meeting, we will have a work session here in the next few minutes, but our Board of Trustees will be meeting with the Joint Alabama State Board of Education in November. I cannot believe this year is almost over. So November the 12th at 10:00 a.m. at the boardroom back at the ACSS facility in Montgomery. We will take a 10-minute break, and then we will reconvene for the work session if that's acceptable with the board members. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I've got a motion from Mr. Houston. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Schell. We are adjourned.[699.73]